So getting this show on the road here, we'll start with the minutes. Before Jane lists at least 10 different things she has found after closing. I want to point out one thing, not a huge deal. Under 4.1 Executive Order 38, about the fourth thing down, it says Mr. Hayward recommended asking for $25,000. Wasn't 100% sure it was me, thought in my head, thought it might have been Jane, which is fine.
Actually, I think it was Chris.
Why on the end? That's it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that was Chris. That wasn't me.
Yeah, I think you're right, too.
It was, it was me.
Okay, we can change that to Chris. That'd be great.
In that same sentence, we just need to use a why at the end.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, I mentioned that. Don't, don't take my thunder, brother.
Sorry, sorry.
So, but I turn it over to Jane.
Yeah, I do have some changes. So Carla called the meeting to order, not Tom.
Yeah.
On the second page near the end where it says that I asked about the remote students. I asked about the students being currently signed up going to go in person. Not bouncing back. So it should read Mrs. Walsh asks about students currently signed up for remote, getting the option to go in person. And then asking about the remote students, you know, what time period they would. They could change from whatever they chose. So there's just an addition into that. And then on the third page, where it says that Suzie reviewed the instructional and financial implications. Right under there, it was that I indicated specials would be remote. I asked for clarifications on specials. And then Suzie indicated they would be remote. And then the librarian and all other stuff. And then further down where it says asked about how they travel outside New Hampshire and New England. So you just need to add New England in there. And the page four where I said recommended giving the Wi-Fi not capability, it's capacity. And that's it. Carla, do you have any?
I'm thrilled that you're good because I always look, oh, yeah, I missed that. Oh, yeah, I missed that. Carla, do you have anything on that?
The only other thing that I have is at the bottom of page three where I was talking, Mrs. Vanderheb indicated everyone did a fantastic job and this plan wasn't viable. But the next line, 100% survey return is a good read. I don't think I said that.
No, you didn't.
So I think, I think what I was saying is that the 100% is return on the survey was just a great job like that's, that's excellent.
Positive.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think that that would be the only thing that I would add.
Okay, if we don't have anything else, then I make a motion to accept them as amended.
Awesome.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Alrighty, next up, financials.
Any public in here or did we?
There is.
Okay, good. Just making sure we opened it up. Sorry about that, Molly.
Oh, no worries. I was pulling up the financial and the board pack that we provided. And so at this point, we have encumbered everything that we know to date. So as a reminder, the financial and your board pack was as of October 27th. So as the year progresses, the actuals will grow, but so will the encumbrances. So as of today, to the page, you're showing the available unencumbered amount of $336,125. So we have encumbered everything that we know. And so that is our amount remaining as of today. Did anybody have any questions or concerns? And we will continue to send the manifest out via email. So as we have a batch, you'll be receiving those to approve via email. And as we're still in the remote status, we can still collect those approvals via email. And if you ever have any questions on things in the manifest, please feel free to ask it anytime. And we can attach whatever documentation you need for that.
We have like almost 19,000 in student body activities.
Which page are you on, Jane?
I'm on page two.
So page two.
I think that's for the sergeant camp.
Yeah. So you'll see that that's not encumbered. So we're not reserving that money since we know it won't.
Probably not going to be spent. Okay.
So anywhere where we know where we're not going to spend the money, it's not encumbered and it's not an actual. So that's why your remaining balance is fairly significant at over 300,000.
Anybody else have anything about this potential summary?
Nope, everything looks, looks good. There's a shortfall in the transportation of almost nine grand.
Yep. So that's going to be where our single runs are versus double runs.
Okay, excellent. Great. Thank you. That's the only things I have.
Okay. Move on to the draft budget review.
So for the draft budget, we've had several rounds of review with Chris and Suzie. So Suzie, if you want to take them through the major changes that you're looking at, and if you all flip to the last page, it's actually, I think you'll be very pleasantly surprised as Suzie takes us through this.
Yes.
Okay.
Coming under. All right.
That's what we like.
So if we just look in the regular education, one of the changes that you'll see that we go down in a lot of things is on the new furniture and fixtures, we went from 3,000 this year up to 13,000. The reason for that is because we should establish a book room and the shelving for that is if you get furniture that's meant for schools to last for 20, 30, 40 years. It's substantial each shelf as well as putting shelves into the classrooms. And as we've cleared out quite a bit out of the building, there is some, there's going to be some need to replace some things. It seems like it's been a long time. I don't expect that line to ever be that big. I really want to create a budget for you all and for the town that has static replacement lines where it's just consistent year after year after year. But right now that seems to be a need in my eyes.
Is this going to be in shelving for each of the classrooms or is this kind of library based?
Not library based. It's a book room for our guided reading.
Ah, okay.
If you go.
The book room's going to be in each classroom. Is that the idea?
There are two. Each classroom should have their own personal libraries. But then there is also a book room for the teachers to access professionally for the books that, that have multiple copies.
Okay. So when you're saying book room, it's not for the kids, it's for the teachers.
Teachers.
Correct.
Where is that book room going to be?
Well, there are a couple of potential places for that to be. One could be the room across from Sarah Bennett's room up in the old building. I would really like it to be centered. It could be where our right next to the first grade classroom currently is. So, you know, as, as I.
That's a storage facility right now?
No, it's the special education room.
Okay.
It, you know, Tom, I haven't lived the building with the students in it yet. It's November, but and so I, it will feel different when they're in the building and I, and I see how we use that. So I'm holding out on that answer right now.
Where are these numbers again? I'm looking, what page is this on?
So this is on the first page. If you look under regular education, it's the second to last one, new furniture and fixtures.
So you're saying it's going to cost $10,000 in shelves? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. Between the classrooms and between doing a room.
And when did you want to do this?
That would be over the summer, probably.
So I know it's too early. I know this is a draft thing. So hear me clearly. I totally get that. I think by the time this becomes more formalized, though, we're going to need to have to know like where the book room is going to go, what it's going to look like, like those are just things we're going to have to be able to eventually sign off on.
Sure.
Kind of kind of Carla's point, I think. You know, but for right now, I totally get it. You don't know exactly yet. And so this number is going to also probably get firmed up, too.
Yep. Can we keep going? You ready?
Yeah, I'm good. You good, Tom?
Yeah, I'm good.
So then under travel for special education, that went up $250. That's because of our preschool. We went substantially down in quite a few things. If you look at our books and other printed material in social education, that went down six grand. We went down 1,000 as well because we found out that there is an equipment room at the SAU where we can get a lot of our equipment instead of having to buy it ourselves at Newfield solely. If we go to page two, you'll see a slight increase on our student bodies activities from 18,9 to 19,9. And that's because there are additional students in our current fourth grade class. So when they go up to fifth grade, if we have sergeant camp, we'll need to account for those students. If we go down into health services, we added a 11, 21, 30, 56, 11. That's our COVID supplies and we put 500 in there for restocking our gloves, thermometers, our N95 masks, preparing if we need to do this for next year. We went down in our replacement equipment. Nurse Merrick just needs blood pressure cuffs for next year and some vision charts need to be replaced. If you go to page three, there was in, we did combine lines for our improvement of instructional services, our professional development. It did increase the line by seven grand from 8,000 to 15,000. That is because I expect to do some training with the staff. So I foresee that being an increase. The books.
Do you have any, do you have an idea of what that training is going to entail or the general gist of it?
Yep, I would potentially like to see a literacy coach and/or math coach get trained specifically to become a coach. So that's where that comes from. In our books and other printed material on in media services going up from 3,500 to 4,000. I did a call to other local elementaries to see what per student is in the library. And it's usually 35 to 40 dollars per head for student. And so 35 with our, we're balancing in about 107 for students right now. I was just trying to get that number up to between the magazines and new books that it should be in our library. We upped our line in computer instructional services, replacement of equipment. We went up to 4,000. Replacing several of our Chromebooks that need, that will be need to be updated after this year.
Before you move on to the, the next page, I did just see that the OT line under, and I'm just, am I reading this wrong? Because it said we had 35,000 for next year's budget, but then there's nothing else after that?
That's correct, Carla. We are going to pay for that out of a grant next year.
Oh.
So this wrist has IDA grant and she is paying for therapists and for both OT and PT across the small districts out of the grant. As she knew, economic times were tight and we had the money there. So this is a cost relief. At some point it will have to go back in, but it looks like we can sustain this for a couple of years for OT and PT so that we can provide lower budgets for the next couple of years due to, do, do, do the economy.
That's awesome. Thank you, Chris.
So then nothing on page four for me. Page five, there was an increase in our voice communication that came in as a direct bid. And then.
What is our current voice communication? Because don't we normally have issues with them? Or we had last year, at least they went down a couple of times. Have we rebid them or got an upgrade?
That, that number comes from Richard Pratt, our technology director, and he does the bid for the entire SAU.
Might be something that, have we had any issues with the phones this year? So far? Okay, because I know last year there was numerous issues with the phones going down for a long period of time during the day.
Nothing reported this year.
Okay, we should keep an eye on that just to make sure because if there's some type of upgrade or things that we need to do to keep that up to date or viable, it'd be something to keep an eyeball on.
And that's it for increases.
Suzie, so I didn't hear any mention of full-time guidance. Any of, I know, and well, this was before your time, we had talked about putting in a certain position and then we went with a stipend on that thing. Is the stipend still in this? Is, is there any, is, is the guidance full time in this?
So the stipend is in this. It's at 2,500, which matches basically normal stipends that are put out across the SAU. So that is.
What about the stipend that we put out earlier for 5,000?
That's what I'm saying. It's at two, it's at 2,500.
So we lowered it to 2,500?
Just to be in range with what other stipends are across the SAU.
Okay, so argue this out with me. If we're asking somebody to do a job for 5,000 this year, why would we be asking them to do the same job for half the amount next year?
I would go back again to saying, to putting it in line with coaches, with other athletic coaches.
No, no, I, Suzie, I totally get that, that line of thinking. I'm just thinking from, if I'm the teacher who was getting 5,000 to do a job and then being told I can do the same job, I'm going to get half the pay. Like, why don't they tell us to go blank ourselves? Like, you know what I mean? Like, that doesn't seem like, I get it's in line, but at the same time, if we thought it was fair this year, shouldn't we still think it's fair next year?
I think, Tom, the rationale when Suzie and I were talking about this budget is by using that professional development line to train teachers in both math and reading as coaches. That will alleviate some of the work that the stipend is paying for. So therefore you're, you're paying $2,500 for coaches for, for math and reading. Your curriculum coordinator would not have to oversee those type of, those two different content areas. So they would be more working with the teachers on current curricular practices rather than full-on training. So it may be the same person, it may not, but it's a shift in how Suzie, Suzie was going to reorganize her staff and support. So there's more people being trained in different areas rather than just one standalone.
Okay, so then maybe I'm confused. So we're going to pay a math coach instead. We're going to, we're thinking next year to pay a math coach 2,500, a reading coach 2,500, and then they'll have this other position at 2,500. Is that right?
No, I want the, I want one coach to be math and science to be 2,500. And then I do want potentially a literacy coach to be trained, which would come out of those other funds.
Okay, and then what would this, so then the position we had this year wouldn't exist? And that would be the math and science one?
Correct.
Is the position we're doing this year dealing with reading as well?
It's, it's, well, it's focusing mainly on math, math, because that's where our, that's where our need greatest is. Our greatest need is learning the I-ready that is just come in. So that's really where our coach is focusing in on her expertise. It's hard for any coach to be an expertise in more than one subject area. If you really want to focus in, it should be on math and science and/or literacy and social studies. So that was the thought behind that.
Carla, Jane, are you picking up what I'm putting down? Like, are you understanding what I'm wondering?
To me, it sounds like it's just a shift, right? So from what it looks like this year to kind of diversifying the position to have more of a math-focused coach, a literacy-focused coach, and to have a few different people doing those things. Is that, is that my understanding?
Yes.
So I mean, I guess that would just be structuring of the teams. So that's a, if that seems like a better model, then, I mean.
I'm not against the model. I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around the fact that this person this year isn't focusing on reading, is focusing on math, getting $5,000, but next year they're going to focus on math and science, which is pretty much what they're doing now, but they're going to get 2,500 less.
But it might be different people with the.
I'm just saying, if it's, that's the part that I'm trying to rationalize and the fact that, and I, and I guess Suzie, so the reading one isn't going to come out of the stipend, it's going to come out of some other money, which is totally fine. I mean, I don't, if we're asking people to do a similar job, I want them to get paid similarly. So.
So Tom, really behind that sentiment was honestly just to level out when I, when I reached out and saw what other coaches got as stipends throughout the district, I was just trying to follow in line in that.
Oh, I, and I totally get that. I mean, that's very responsible. Like, that's what you're supposed to do as a principal. Like, I totally get it. But at the same time, like, we pay less than everybody else. You know what I mean? So it's, it's, it's a tough argument. You know, in a certain sense, if, I don't know, if the job was worth $5,000 and it's pretty much the same job, it's still worth $5,000. And if we pay more than everybody else, well, yay, that's a perk for being with us. Type in my head, that's how I see it. So it's fine. I mean, like, this is a draft. We're not hammering it out tonight. I totally get it. But it's just something to think about. And I appreciate you trying to save us money. I just don't want to send any message to a teacher that we don't I don't know, appreciate the stuff we're doing. You know what I mean? And stuff like that. So it's just something that I would not have an issue if it's the same job, pay him $5,000. I could care less.
Just to make it quick, quick, simple point, it's the same $5,000 just being split between two different air content areas. So it's a shift in how the work's being distributed.
You mean, so someone's doing math and then someone's doing science?
Nope, someone would do the math, science, and then someone would be doing the English language arts. So.
I get it, but it's still, in my head, though, it still means the same thing that the person's still doing the, the person that we have now isn't doing literacy.
And they're. But that person is involved in our monthly, or our bi-monthly curricular meetings. That's being involved in a lot more work that that committee is doing. So that committee work would be shared by, you know, these two individuals. It's really a reorganization of how you're going to be working on curriculum rather than just having one person in store for all of them as well as teaching. At that 5,000, it's, it's getting two people who are coached to do more training with, 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 with the staff.
I get it. I just, I don't know, man. If I was a teacher, I'd, I just, just want, you know, pay me what I'm worth sort of thing. And I'm okay paying more. I could care less what other people are doing in other districts, me personally. But hey, we'll talk about it later on. Jane? Carla, you guys got anything you want to add on that one?
Yeah, you would ask about the full-time guidance. I'm sorry, Carla.
Yeah, that was the next thing.
Oh, yeah, just to wrap it up. I mean, just as long as, as the staff's happy and it's like if they wanted focus on one area versus another, then I'm fine. You know, like, I think you're right, Tom. We can just go over the details later. But I, it makes sense to me. If one person's doing both things and then we wanted to, you, you guys wanted to split it apart so that they were handled independently and everyone's happy about that, then, then I would be happy. But yeah, go ahead to the next.
So the counselor, I would absolutely endorse bringing on the counselor so full-time. I wanted to leave that up to you all. There is definitely a need.
What would be the, the delta between what we would need to bring the counselor full-time?
I can get that for you. Just a minute.
Is there a point six right now, right, Tom? Is that right?
Point eight, isn't it? Or do we make it point six?
I thought it was point six.
I thought we increased it.
We increased it to point six. It was point five last year. We increased it to point six. And we're actually going to have it at point seven this year because we're paying for it out of one of our grants. So it will be point seven for this year, but we're only supporting it at six out of the budget.
Would the points, the extra point be supported by the grant at any point in time moving forward past this year?
It would be difficult to support it out of that grant year by year. But it could. That, that's a grant that gets smaller and smaller each year. It's a.
Nice. Okay.
So for her, for the counselor to go up to 80% would be $9,000. And for her to go up to 100% would be just over 12,000.
Does that include health? Does that change your health status too for like insurance? To be full-time, so.
Molly, do you have that answer?
Yeah, it would change the health and also retirement, too. Correct, Michelle?
Okay, well, here's my thing. I could have sworn that there was a huge push to have a full-time guidance. Okay, well, here's my thing. I could have sworn that there was a huge push to have a full-time guidance. Thoroughly expected to see full-time guidance in here. I know, I don't know if Bobby's listening, but if he was, he'd be saying, what happened to full-time guidance? So if that's something you feel strongly about, Suzie, I would put it in. If you don't feel strongly about it, don't put it in. I know if it goes in, one of the things I would like to know is, how many, does schools our size have full-time guidance? Not that that's like a make it or break it thing, but I'm just curious as to what other schools are doing in terms, not even the ones in our district, but look around at some of the other ones that are about our size.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, you know, looking at, as we return and for next year, that the stress of coming back, I can just totally see a valid reasoning to have a full-time counselor.
Is there a difference between health and retirement benefits at 80% versus 100%?
Michelle was saying yes.
Okay, so if they're at 80%, they're not technically full-time. That's my assumption, and, but if they're at 100, then obviously, yes, we would want to do that.
Right, they would move into retirement if you go to a full-time 1.0 FTE, 100%.
Okay.
So just to be clear, I would like to have a full-time counselor. I do think that it would benefit our students, and I do think that the need is going to be extremely great. I can't tell you the number of conversations I've had with parents that talk about the anxiety that their children are feeling, especially because of COVID, but just, there is an increase in students who have anxiety and lots of fears that they need to have an opportunity to discuss in a school setting. So I will bring that forward in the next, in the next round, along with how much the total FTE would be with retirement and healthcare.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Suzie, is there, and I, I totally understand your position. You're trying to give us like the lowest amount, make us feel good about where we're at. But is there, I mean, you left out guidance, so clearly that's something you had wanted. Is there other things that you wanted, but you didn't put in because you were afraid of where the numbers were going to go?
No.
That's, that's it, just the guidance?
We, just to, to add to that, in this budget, this has seven classroom teachers in there. Did not change the, the classroom teachers, and the thought was if we need to have remote instruction, we'd have that budgeted already, so we're not going through the hiring process or asking for more. And if we are able to return in full, we'd be able to make that person a long-term sub in, in the building so that they could sub in any classroom in case a situation occurred, so we weren't having to go to the, to the talent pool. So when you see that first number for regular instruction teacher salaries, it's why it stays constant, because that was what we had budgeted this year for seven classroom teachers, and it stays constant for next year. So that, that remained in the budget, and that was the rationale and thinking behind that.
And I'm, I'm assuming next year, like, the numbers are pretty much going to stay the same, and like, we're not breaking out into, let's say there's, let's say there's a happy world with there's no COVID. We're not, are we looking at breaking up any classes if that was the case, if there was no COVID, or?
Actually, we have increased in our numbers, almost 20 children. So, you know, if those numbers continue, then we will need to. Right now, our third grade is at 21 students.
What's the incoming for kindergarten? Do we know those?
We'd have that yet.
You don't have those yet?
But Suzie, we're at 107?
Correct.
Okay, and where do we end last year at, like 10?
1?
104.
I came in and it was 97.
Okay. Gotcha. And the 107, I'm assuming, is that including, do we have any kids whose parents have decided to homeschool this year?
Yes.
And so that, those numbers are in the 107?
No, those are only students who are currently enrolled.
Okay, how many homeschool kids do we have that weren't homeschooled before this, that are now homeschooled, Tom?
I can tell you that. I believe the number's five, but.
Okay.
Be accurate.
And did we have private school, kids that moved to private school this year too that might be coming back, or no?
And I'm aware of for that.
Okay.
Okay, well, yeah, keep an eye on the numbers, and I'd be curious, because, I mean, things get better. Those five that homeschool may be coming back, so it'd be interesting to see where they fell in the.
14, Tom, there are 14 that are out either homeschool, kindergarten, stayed out.
So we have 14 that are presently homeschool, they're not enrolled in our district whatsoever?
That's correct.
Okay.
Some of those made the choice, some of those made the choice after our last meeting.
Okay.
Okay, just so I have an idea of the numbers. So we have 14 that are strictly homeschooled after the whole COVID thing blew up.
Well, that was the total.
Well, I mean, if, like, if some, like, I know somebody in town who's homeschooled their kids and schooled them before COVID, they're going to, after they believe in homeschooling. I'm just curious as to what are the numbers of the kids who might potentially come back, I guess, and I don't need that tonight. But that would be interesting to add to the 107 we know, and then if we broke it out into grades, to have an idea of where that's going.
I can tell you that as well. Do you want to do that right now?
Honestly, it's not a big deal right now. You can figure it out, go, that's fine. I just something that, it, it's interesting because it may change the dynamics of where we are staffing-wise, and that's something, obviously, affect the budget, something I'd be interested in.
Well, and if we're still in the same situation next year, yeah, the staffing would be, have to be somehow dealt with, and different classrooms, et cetera, so we'll have to figure that out.
Yeah.
Six of those, six of those 14 are actually kindergarten.
Oh, okay.
So there'll be first grade next year.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay.
All right, well, if you have time between now and next month, if you could just kind of put together a little, you know how we did the list of so many per grades? Maybe just add a column of, here are the homeschool kids that are in grades 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I, I think it would be interesting, but, I mean, I would only include homeschool kids or make a distinction between those that were prior COVID versus post.
Okay.
The post ones are probably coming back if this cleans up. The prior ones are probably not, regardless.
I know, that's true. I do know of a family that specifically, a couple families that specifically said, we're just out for the year because of COVID, but we are coming back.
Yeah.
No, and that's fine. Those, those I want, I, I'm talking about the ones who were homeschooled last year was no issue, and they're not coming back because that's not something they believe in, and I totally get that, so.
And if, if those could potentially change this budget too.
Right, maybe, that's a good factor that could, you know, totally affect it. All right, does anybody else have anything for Suzie about this budget? Cool. All right, well, thank you, Suzie. Good first one. Lord knows.
Yeah, good job, Suzie. This was really well put together. Thank you.
So let's move to committees. We got anything from policy?
Nope, there has been no policy meetings.
Okay, safety and security?
Not since.
This part of the thing is so easy nowadays.
I know.
Right, this seems to be the hardest part.
Yeah, I think I'm the only one to have anything to add. Superintendent Evaluation Committee is meeting on Monday. I'm still unsure. I, we'll go back to my last comments about this. We're meeting anyways, and I'm going to go. I'm not 100% sure what we're going to talk about. One of the things we have to talk about as a group is who is going to that superintendent evaluation thing? If you want on, I will back off. If you guys are fine, I will go. It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I'm good if you want to go. I am swamped.
No, it's fine. I don't do policy, and I don't do safety, so that's fine. It, you know, it's be unfair, I think, otherwise, but I also want to throw out to anybody, I'll switch if somebody wants in on the superintendent evaluation. I'm not exactly sure what they're planning, because going forward, we haven't even met about what it is, how we want to evaluate the superintendent.
Yeah, it's been kind of sidelined this year a little bit.
Right, and I think the cart is a little bit ahead of the horse on this one. I would like us to meet as a group first to see what we want to do. I will, I'm going to throw something out to you too, because I want your input on this idea. Part of me just wants us to evaluate the superintendency as a town and send that in as our thing. Because the reality is, we don't really deal with David much. We deal with his representative, Chris. And so part of what we're evaluating, although we are evaluating him, we're evaluating him based upon what Chris does.
Right, via proxy.
Right, and I think part of it is somewhat unfair, because I love what Chris does, and I think Chris has been great for us, and I think some of what like Chris does and Helen does and some of these guys do gets utterly lost in the evalu, or, you know, hell, we can say stuff about Molly, we can say stuff about Michelle, and I think it's lost, because we're focusing on David's goals, which are vaguely related to the other three, but it stops us, I think, to a certain extent, from saying the positive things that should be said about the guys that we deal with.
Yeah, I think that's true, but our only employee is David.
No, no, I get it. That's why I would kind of like to see our take on it represented separately from all the other takes, and let them all do their own, and then it all goes into a thing. We can agree on the topics we want to talk about, but get out of the whole large kumbaya group that's supposed to come to a, a general consensus about something. It just seems, I don't know, it seems like our perspective gets watered down based upon the group's perspective.
We do have a very different perspective and a different experience than the other school boards who, in school district, who work with David directly.
Right.
So, I mean.
They should both be included. Like, I don't mind my, because we still see a high level, you know, David's work, but then also, you know, being able to comment on the other, you know, everyone here. It would be nice as well to, that way, that way, even if it just goes to David, like, this is how, you know, we've enjoyed the work or whatnot.
Yeah, I know the present system we're doing is so ridiculously cumbersome.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
An absolute nightmare. I, it bothers me severely that certain people have used it as a way to sharpen and grind their axe to take out issues publicly. And part of me wants to at least allow our voice to be heard about what we're seeing with the people we're dealing with under David's guidance as opposed to lumping us all in.
Yeah, give it a go, see how far we get. I have a, I mean, I, I think you're right. I think our, our experiences are different. Our, our working relationship is different, and you're right, we don't, we don't have the same.
Dynamics.
Thank you, yeah.
No, true.
Yeah, go for it, see what happens, and.
Well, don't worry, because it'll be at the joint board meeting.
Oh, yay! When is the next joint board meeting, by the way? Is that, I know it's going to be this month.
Could be, I have no idea.
Chris, when is it?
I'm looking it up right now.
Thank you. I don't remember when, it wasn't mentioned on the last call, if I remember correctly.
While Chris is doing that, Suzie, you want to give us a school update?
Sure. So since we last spoke, two pods have been dropped on our property, and they are almost completely full. We have cleaned house like you would not believe, and it actually has been not only a great physical, but psychological purge, I think. Huge kudos to our custodian, Kurt Peterson, who really has been going top to bottom the whole time working to get us ready. You know, we didn't, we hoped not to take any full day off. We wanted to keep instruction for our students, and but with that, there was a lot of afternoons and evenings in this past weekend that teachers came in and really did a fantastic job.
How full is the gym?
Not as full as you would think. A lot of things got thrown out.
Oh, great, good.
Yep. We continue to have professional development, both in math and literacy. The teachers each received a text set of 25 books for their interactive read-alouts, and this really has a global perspective of diversity of characters and settings. So that's really an emphasis that we're happy to start implementing into our rooms. We want anyone with any skin tone color to be able to walk into our classrooms and be able to identify with things in the room, including literature, see themselves in that, so we're really happy about those sets. They're beautiful. We did a principals' challenge in October. The students did, they had foil go home, and they were encouraged by me to make a boat or some type of engineer, some type of mechanism that can hold as many candy, candy corn pieces as possible. And then they videoed that into me on their seesaw, and it was fantastic to see them get so excited about that work. I have one, if you guys would like to see that. And then, of course, our drive-by Halloween parade was last Friday, and even in the snow, we went out and had a blast seeing the students. We do have one thing from Anna Donahoe. She is requesting space for the, for a blood drive on potentially even Christmas Eve. They just don't have a space large enough to be able to house it, and so they, they're hoping that you all will approve the gym being used for that. Voting was a really big success yesterday in the gymnasium, so that's something that I'm bringing forward to y'all.
I guess it really depends on the space. What, what kind of space can we make available for them if, is like a quarter of the gym full?
Yeah, I think that there's plenty of space in the center of the gym. Really, right now, we're just using the perimeter of it. So as long as they don't mind seeing supplies around the perimeter of the gym, then we have the space.
Where is it? Where are the blood drives usually held? Aren't they usually?
In the gym.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they've been in the gym traditionally.
Yeah.
We had one, Chris, not too long ago?
Did it in May.
In May, okay. Suzie, can you do me a favor, though? Reach out to these people and maybe have them come in and check out the space to make sure. I've never been inside, so I don't know how much space they need.
Okay.
Maybe they need more than the, which, I don't know, but at least they can at least see it and know ahead of time.
And if they want the space, are y'all going to be able to have it?
Yeah, I mean, they'll do like we did last time, Chris. They'll come up with, you know, the procedures for the COVID and all that kind of stuff, and blah, blah, blah. I mean, it went fine last time. I sense anything otherwise, and if they need more space, they can look around and see what's available, and then we can, you know what I mean, they can make a decision, and you can make a decision on, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
And everyone will be out anyway, because you said it's the.
Christmas.
Christmas, yeah, so, yeah, that's fine by me.
Okay.
Yeah. Hey, anything else on school update, Suzie?
No, that's it.
Okay, a quick question for you. The barriers that are out there.
Yes.
I know you got them from NIPS night. What's the cost on those things?
I don't, I don't know that there was a cost.
Bryce is a nice guy.
I actually just asked Jane to ask if there could be barriers for when we started school, because we really need to keep a policy of nobody getting out of their car and just students exiting out of their cars. And so we're trying to discourage people coming in from that side route to get up to the annex. They got dropped early, but the intention was to have them for November 9th.
Yeah, no, I get it. I was just curious, and, I mean, find out if Bryce is charging you. I mean, I don't, he's a great guy. I have no idea what his plan is. He may have just given it to you because he's a good guy. I don't think anything other, but if there is a cost, that's something we would have to know, just, you know, type of deal.
Knowing Jane, if there was a cost associated with it, she would have told me, but I will double around and make sure.
Thank you. Okay, we have personnel.
I just wanted to update you that we are in the process of hiring a paraprofessional to take over in person. We have interviewed her. We do have the nomination ready to go, but just wanted to make you. We have interviewed her. We do have the nomination ready to go, but just wanted to make you aware of that. Hire so we can have a full staff building when we return on the night. We do have some staff members that are unable to return, so that covers the need in the building.
Anything on that, guys? Okeydoke. Public input. We just open it up, Chris, and see if anybody has anything? This would be the first meeting without any public input. It's gonna be weird. But if anybody out there does have a question that hasn't been answered yet regarding any of this stuff.
There you go.
That's not a question, Bishop, but good enough. Okay, she's put down, great job, Suzy. Jenny never understands a question, but then she asks it anyway, so. Okay, we'll give it a couple more minutes just to see if there's anything else going on. Does anybody else have anything while we're waiting?
I just wanted to update everyone on the, we talked about the safe money at the last meeting. Because we did get true numbers in. The, it's, the safe turned into the supplemental public school response fund. We did get allocation of twenty thousand eight hundred dollars. We do have certain stipulations on how to spend that money. So I mean, what Suzy and I are doing tomorrow is kind of going through our budget. It's anything that we did not prepare for in our current budget, so nothing we budgeted for. And we have, we can expend it from anything from March first, twenty twenty through December thirtieth, twenty twenty. So we will go through, Suzy and I, and make sure that we're not asking for the same money that we worked with the town on used in our DOE twenty-five return. So we have earmarked some certain things that we know we can ask for. I think we've got about six thousand dollars that we've already identified. But we will spend every dollar because if we don't, it goes back to the state. So we will spend all twenty thousand eight hundred dollars, but just wanted to update you as we did get, finally get the, the full guidance behind that from the, from the governor's office. So we will give you an update of what we spent that on in our December meeting so that you can see that we were really taking advantage of every dollar that's coming our way.
Awesome. Hey, we have two quick questions. When is the budget committee meeting? I don't know, Jenny, when are you meeting? Do we have a date on that?
Usually it's what, March? That's when it's due, right?
That's the, that's our deliberative session in.
Right, 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 right.
We usually do a budget meeting in December or January. Let me just pull up our meeting, meeting schedule.
Usually December.
Well, while we're looking that one up, I'm gonna answer Bobby Kelly's question because I was gonna bring this up. Thank you for inviting me, Bobby. He wanted an update on the Gopher funds through the town. We were able to get this stuff over to Mike. Mike and the selectmen were awesome about getting it in on time and making sure that all that was done. And that only happened because Molly and company were great on getting all the invoices over. So I think the final total, Chris, was a little more than eleven thousand, I think, for the Gopher funds.
That's correct.
Yeah, and so that should be coming our way. So that's good news too. A little hectic there at the end, but honestly, Molly and those guys, everyone did a great job. So.
Yeah, so our next school board meeting is December second. We typically do a budget hearing before that with the budget committee. Since we're gonna do another draft with the budget with, with you all, I would recommend that we do a meeting maybe directly after our board meeting on the second, if the budget committee can hear and ask any questions you have. Because we need to, I need to get the dates in January when our public hearing will be held on that, that budget. Still, I've gotten that from the town. So once I get that, then we're, we're good.
Okay, so, yeah, why don't we shoot for that December second?
And then you answer your question, the next joint board meeting is not till December twenty-first.
Oh geez, really? When is, so we don't have one in November then?
Not.
Think people are shell-shocked from all the ones we had.
Yeah, no kidding. It's that, you're kidding me. We're having it the Monday before Christmas?
I think David's gonna bring us all holiday cookies, so.
Oh, he better. I better get my virtual nips ready for that. That's.
Yeah, we would, I know David went back to more of the regular meeting schedule for the joint board. And so that would fall in line as for every other month.
First day of winter too.
I don't think we have any more questions. Does anybody else have anything?
Good.
A little different than some of the other meetings, no doubt about that.
I'll take it.
I'll take this any day, but you know, good luck, Suzy, coming up with everything. I think it's gonna be a success, so I'm not anticipating any issues. All right, well, if nobody has anything, and of course, as always, Andruski, thank you, sir. You're like the big toe to the foot, so. You've never heard that? Oh, without the toe, you can't be stable and you fall over.
It makes total sense. It's just, it's an idiom I've never heard of before.
You can call me an idiot, but it's true. So, okay, well, if no one has anything, we can call this and then I can hook up with you guys for the MOA meeting.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
Cool, so I'll make a motion to a joint.
I'll second.
Or something?
Oh, I'll eye it. We're good.
Awesome. All right, guys. Thank you very much, everybody.